And guest list. Is anyone not signed to guest list? Thanks very much. Four is a couple of minutes.
I move to approve the minutes from the February fourteenth board meeting. We're meeting.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the February fourteenth twenty twenty two board meeting. All those in paper signify by saying aye. The folks saying signs. Motion carries. Number five, prioritize the agenda, Mr. Grill.
Screen down the line, please. We're good to go.
All right, then on that, we'll go to six A superintendent report.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to March and welcome to the first week without masks after a couple of years. Really nice today. Got a chance to ask our administrators on how things went. Everybody seemed pretty pleased about how things went with regards to the day of masks and no masks. And just another step in getting back to normal. And that has been, I think, huge in the long term. We have a lot of our staff in the audience tonight and you guys need to hear me say that there's no way. No way we get this done. As I look out, each and every one of them, in their own way, has said to me numerous ways, numerous times, this is very hard, this is not what I signed up for. And at the same time, we will get through this over and over and over again. They continue to advise me. And without them knowing this, kept me going from time to time. Being able to look at them and say, you know, I kind of hold up in an obvious kind of view of big things. These guys have to deal with all the kids, all the people, and all the parents, all the staff, all the questions every day. And I just really appreciate it. We would not be where we are at this definition of the cascade. This is the definition of how and why we are special. I don't say that too loudly around other superintendents, but the reality is we are. And I know that people believe when they go somewhere, they say, yep, it's special here too. But these are one of those moments where this is why it's special. There were times over the last few years that these folks basically just said, you know, climb on board, we're gonna get through it. And every time there was a bump in the road, every time there was a conversation about, I just don't know how this is gonna work. I'm totally frustrated, I don't know how things are gonna learn, I don't know how our staff is gonna figure this out. These folks in this room along with all the other staff, and it was like, we're gonna do that, there's a way to figure this out. I don't know how many times, I'm just gonna select one person, I don't know how many times, Heather Woodraw said to me, kids are here? Kids are here, kids are here, that's all that matters, all the other stuff goes by the wayside. Kids are here, they're in our, in our way, they're right in front of our face, we gotta deal with it. Two months later, we go live, I'd say something like, I just don't know. You'd be like, kids are here, it's fine, it's gonna be great, we're gonna figure it out, we're gonna, we're gonna have it, and it's gonna work. And so those kinds of comments, each and every person in this room said stuff to me. So I want you guys to know that there's no way, there's no way we're not this specifically approved. I wanna let you guys know, thank these folks, all the others out here tonight for what is happening. The other thing is that over the last couple of weeks, I know I talk to you individually, we did move forward on stipends and a work day and a day off for our staff, which is what the goal around retention. I think it was well received, your associations felt like it was well received, and we wanna thank you for allowing that to take place. Each person will get a sixteen hundred dollar retention bonus, eight hundred in this year, eight hundred next year. And I just really appreciate the opportunity that you guys saw what we needed to have happen for the health and wellbeing of our staff. So thank you. Questions?
Any questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Grill. Moving on is the finance director's report, Bill.
Well, good evening, everyone, you have my report in front of you, lovely to see you. Totally nice to see you, please. Not much to add on the written report, other than Mr. Phil and I are working ultimately on the big rocks of the budget. Getting the budget season rapidly approaching. So we have had a number of meetings on S R two, S R three, S I A, and are growing general fund budget. So things are looking pretty good for next year. I'm not concerned about next year. In fact, I see a bright path for about two years of decent funding.
Can I have a question on that?
Yeah.
On that session, my question for you is this S R funds two and three. Yes. Are we gonna get ourselves in a position where we come reliant upon those funds and will it hurt when they go away?
Absolutely, well, we are absolutely working not to, because of why.
That's my concern is if we get addicted to that money.
That's the whole trick. The whole trick is, and that's why we have so many meetings, because it's a real fine line. I think a lot of, it's tempting to build another, a number of programs that have a five, ten, fifteen year funding cycle. And we cannot do that.
Right, we can't guarantee this beyond twenty-four right now.
No, exactly, yeah, so we've got twenty-five and twenty-six when S R two ends and S R three. Okay, and those are some decent funding, right, S I A is going to stick around to the foreseeable future. But, you know, we are working very hard to make sure that we're spending emphasis on things, short-term shots, those types of things in order to avoid staying into a situation. Now, obviously, if we're taking a big educational burden in our delivery of education that demands or would benefit our students by adding general fund dollars to it, we are, you know, that's on the table.
Right.
But at this point, it's, you know, we can't lie.
We're eyes wide open, though, at least this part.
Absolutely, that's exactly what we're studying all the time. Thank you for that question. Anything else? That's all I have.
I do have a quick question.
Okay.
I was just, I can give one more. Um, I heard briefly that they were talking about funding from COVID to states possibly having to be repaid if it wasn't used. Is that going to?
Well, there has, that's a, well, it's a complex question, because we've heard that as well. But the state has, has kind of a funny way of saying how the money has been used. For instance, S I A, for instance, is front-loaded funds for us. We have a couple of other grants that are what are called front-loaded funds. So they have said that we spend that money. And even though we have that money, we have yet to, you know, make up or done the activities to earn up those funds. So we, we are in a achievable balance at this point. In some of those grants.
Okay.
But really, I, you know, I mean, we do a good job, we don't need much money.
I know we don't, but.
So I don't think we're gonna be.
Yes, for three not having to be used for two or three years. I didn't know if that would mean we have to pay it back if we didn't use.
Yeah, we, on the S R three, S R three is a reimbursement grant. So we would not actually end up getting those funds.
Okay.
So there is a chance that we, you know, it's a doubtful chance, but there is that chance that we don't spend the entire amount of our allocation. But we would never be on the hook for returning.
Okay.
In that, in that.
Okay. Okay.
I would say to you too, who look out for this audience, there is no way that these people are allowing to leave one dollar on the table.
Well, I know, I mean, but I'm just, you know, I.
I'm just, I'm just telling you, there are some specialists in this room that spend money quickly. So our balance is, our, our goal is to try to figure out how to do it like state.
You're right.
And Scott's reminding me of, here's the sideboards, this is the grant. But we have been staying all along. If you ask any one of these folks, they could spend it all right now. They will have a really good, you know what, they'll be really good ideas. I mean, they come up with the most amazing ideas.
Right.
What we're trying to accomplish is to do it so that it affects as many people as we can fairly across the district. Right, and as Scott said just a minute ago, that we don't start the sort of program that we suddenly can't sustain after twenty-three, twenty-four.
Right.
That's the trick. So, you know, we'll come to you, we're gonna explain it, but I promise you, if there's a dollar ninety-eight less, somebody out here is gonna say, I could use that for this.
Right.
So, and they pressed me, I've asked them to press me.
Good.
Right, I want them to be able to press me and figure out a way so we can do it, spend as much as we can. Scott reminds me of the rules, here are the rules, here are the rules, back and forth. We probably talked more about these funds, if you go back seven or eight years, with some of the funds that come out of the recession. Right, we didn't, we didn't think in those terms back then, now we really are like, okay, how does this work? And we're blessed that we are not using that money to backfill because we have not lost students.
Right, right.
There are districts around us that will start cutting budgets next year because they are short on students. We have debated about leaving students over the course of the year. So, good questions.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Phil, appreciate it. Moving on to C high school principal's report, Mr. Rassman.
Good evening, you guys. You have your report in front of you, and I took a little different angle this time. I wanted to introduce you to some of the things that we're doing in the school that don't always necessarily fall within the bounds of normal. I didn't include, you have other things, because then Mr. Gans was gonna speak tonight. Allison didn't include traditional classroom activities that you might expect. So I've given you a really long comprehensive list of all the unique things that are happening. So in the midst of a pandemic and all kinds of different things happening in the world today, I thought this list was really indicative of the things that we're really doing for our kids here. And so I don't wanna take a lot of time today, I'll take some questions, but now Mr. Woodrow, Mr. Gans will have time, so I don't want the high school monopolize for me. But any questions about that list?
You can, so I'll ask, yeah. The, hang on a second, now I lost my question. Okay, no, here we go. So one of the things was the F F A, we have a new F F A advisor out there. Would it be possible to get either the F F A advisor or some of the kids to come in here and talk to us about kind of what the bigger picture is? You know, it'd be nice to hear what their plan is on, on what they're gonna do with that program.
They're coming, they're going to the state convention.
Right.
Next weekend.
Okay.
So excited.
They're excited to go, you've got, I have some, some kids have done really well, some competitions, so we will get them in here.
And the other question, it doesn't need to be with this list, but do we have any idea how many students on average go to the military out of this school district upon graduation?
No, I don't, I don't know if Mr. Thatcher or how it is, have you ever done that video? Yeah. Okay, we can, we will look at, I know Ms. Pat does our postgraduate follow-ups, and so I bet you I can get those numbers for you next time.
I'd be curious to know what the state averages and what we are, just out of curiosity on that.
We have had, we have recruiters in here weekly.
That's why I asked, Jay tells me they're in here a lot.
They're in here all the time.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, I don't know if they're bored, or we're just open, or what.
Or maybe, maybe they have success here, and that'd be interesting to know.
I think there is something to that, to that.
Right, right.
We love having all the time.
Okay. Any other questions?
After spring break, I'm gonna come and have a tour. I wanna see the new automotive section, you put in a lift out there?
Yep.
What happened to the old lift?
Well, for one, they were antiquated, they weren't gonna work. They were, they were in the concrete and the floors. And so this is one of those stand on top of the concrete with hydraulics. Kind of big, it's beautifully, I just stopped there today, in fact, looks great. That teacher seems to have been great, seems to enjoy it. We get him for a period of day, then he goes to his business, it's really working well.
And how is the Lamont Academy working with our kids?
Great. This year, this is, while Lisa will be coming and speaking with you in May.
Okay.
She's the senior director, but briefly, we have, we started with that in nineteen, and we're down to like sixteen kids that are here and at the opportunity center, who go half their days to Lamont Career Academy and half of it is here. There's some, there's some adjustments to make sure they get two and a half credits each trimester, because they get two credits from there and two credits from here in person, then we have to do one more online to make sure they get a total of five classes, just because timing travel. But right now, our kids going there, they're doing cosmetology, they're doing decent mechanics, and they're doing health services. Next year, they're adding three more programs, which is informational technology, construction and manufacturing, and. Off our list. Two separates, that's right, thank you, they're two separate, that's right, that's why I put them together. Um, we already have nineteen applicants, kids who are wanting to go to that program next year. Now, we are limited on slots because they can only take so many kids, and it's a consortium of eleven different districts. So we're only gonna get three slots per program. So we will end up being semi-competitive for some of the programs, like cosmetology, we're full already. A couple of kids are gonna graduate, but that means we only have two slots unless they give us more. So we have like seven new girls, and I think there are those who want to go to our program next year, and we probably won't have that many slots. So, but, but it's an exciting program, if you ever get the chance to tour it, contact me, we'll take you, Ms. Melissa will take you.
Oh, cool.
It's an amazing, it's an amazing, it's the old, the old Toys R Us online.
Where's the best toy store in Salem?
Well, now it's the best tech, tech program.
I would love to.
It's really cool, you walk in and it looks like you're in a hospital ward on one end, and you go out back, and then there's a big giant, decent mechanic shop back there, and they've got two big giant semis they're working on. You go up to the front, and there's a whole cosmetology school up front, and it looks like you're walking into a salon. And there's all these stations, and they're gonna, next year, they're gonna be rotating Watkins off the street to do haircuts and those kind of things too, so.
Wow.
It's, it's really cool. It is a commitment for our students, they have to give up half of their day in their junior and senior year. But the, the rewards are tremendous. If that's their field, and they wanna go into those areas, they're gonna get a leg ahead of some of their fellow, fellow people doing that one, that same thing.
Good.
Okay. Any other questions? And Tony will be here next, on Wednesday, I think, talk more about that, she loves it.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate it. Moving on is high school assistant principal's report, Mr. Woodrow.
So, just really quickly, you guys, there's some military coming in quite a bit, just my conversations with them, I just asked them, like, compare us to other schools. You know, and they say we by far have the most respectful wellbeing, because they're in here during lunch, it's pretty hectic. And they were just so pleased on how well our kids are doing, they're here quite a bit. I just wanna highlight a few things, Chris Duffy, she put on the play Radiant Girls, I don't know if you've got a chance to see it. And just the work it takes replacing Allison Orange and, you know, coming off of COVID, getting kids involved, getting kids committed to putting on the play, she had to switch the times a few times because of sports, but just what a great job she did. Keeping all those kids involved was very impressive. So she did a great job, the school enjoys the way she's turned out. Also, Dave Medlock, he has a drones class that he's put on, he puts on the most cra- the craziest classes, he gets thirty-plus kids involved. He's got kids flying drones, he's got kids building obstacle courses. And if you ever get a chance to sit in and observe that class, it's impressive, like, he's able to get out of some of those kids, because we put everybody and anybody in this class because he's able to manage them. Also, Mrs. Cox has been doing a health services program for a few years, obviously with COVID. There's a lot of limitations on what those kids can do. She has reached out to Turner Fire, they are working there, she's worked out to other people in the medical field to come in and talk to these kids, my own kids in the program. And I'm just really pleased, despite obstacles on the way, she's worked extremely hard to keep those kids active and keep them involved. Now, for the most part, my job and title is me doing discipline and for the most, and we have really good kids here at the school. And I can't tell the kids, they've got six or seven kids who monopolize about ninety-five percent of my time. And with that, I often tell them, you know, we have six hundred and fifty other kids here, it's still, they'll figure it out, why can't you do this? So a lot, a lot of parts of my job, I try to focus on celebrating the good things that they're doing. Every three weeks, I have teachers send two postcards home, just saying, you know, send to the kid who's doing well, send it home to their parents when they see that. At the end of the first trimester, each teacher recognized a top student, and we brought in lunch for Greg Robin to celebrate what they did do. Okay, you do look on the hall, there's posters of, of the kids who got chosen. So we, we really try to recognize the good things kids are doing all the time, we do perfect attendance. You know, I work with Ann Yonker on that, and kids who are missing school, we try to put incentive plans together to get kids back in school, and try to truly figure out why are kids missing school, what they, what we can provide to them to get them here more often. You know, what's the problem, is it classes, is it other students, the home life? You know, so we really try to reach out, identify the problems with these kids. But what I, main thing is, I try to celebrate more of the good things we have going on and the good things kids are doing because ninety-five percent of the kids are truly doing the right thing, kind of making good choices, and I think they should be recognized for that. So that's a lot of what I'm doing, and I, Darren says, you know, the very worst day that I've had with kids in school is better than the best day of distance learning, because I could not handle this learning at all, it was horrible, I was, it just, not having kids in the building, seriously, it was the worst thing for me. Now that they're back in, I can take every phone call, I can take every kid you think out of class, but just the idea of distance learning was the worst for me personally. So, if you guys have any questions, I'm willing to answer them, if you guys have, yes.
I have a couple. You, you touched both of them a little bit, but can you explain the school attendance process in a group of kids? So, do you still have like that ten day drop?
Yeah, I mean, if you're gone, taking second days, we do drop, then what, we meet weekly, and when I say we, Ann, you know, Chris, and I sit down and talk back to who are gone, we also work with current Davis in the attendance office, and try to find out exactly, you know, why are these kids calling in sick, what's going on, is there something at home, is there a split at home, parents are getting divorced, are the kids moving, are they homeless now? And so with that, we try to problem solve it, you know, some kids, we've gotten gas cards due, because they live, they're homeless now, they live in Salem, but they need gas to get here each day. You know, I have one kid who's late every day because his Uber ride shows up late. And so we try to work to get them here, so every problem's different, because there's just so many variables for why it exists. But what we do try to do is try not to, you know, look at each individual student. Our attendance is pretty good, it's ninety percent plus across the board for all the grades. However, you know, there are small pockets of kids who have individual issues, and we try to solve as much as possible. Sometimes it's just they fall behind in classes, and they need to feel they're gonna get support caught up, caught up. So we have tutoring after school, and so we have them come in and get the tutoring, so they're more inclined to show up. So every problem is unique, so we just try to address it on an individual basis, so things like that.
I have another question else, I, I wondered this for a long time, but are you gonna be a panel still also?
No, that, a few years ago, that changed, and now just there's Marie Thompson, she's got a few staff members that are doing it, so.
But they are just their own.
Correct.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Woodrow, appreciate it. All right, going on to athletic director's report, Mr. Gansfield.
Well, good evening. I tried to highlight a little, few of the things that, just our winter season, a few of the highlights, few of the things that we had accomplished and it kind of went through, and. I mean, just listing these things, that would have been enough minus even what happened since I wrote this report a couple of weeks ago, but. I mean, hosting the state wrestling tournament, we were happy to be able to do it, the ones definitely called, since we had done it last spring, they asked us to do it again. Quite an undertaking, glad we won't, hopefully we won't have to do it again, because it is a lot of work, and Jason and his staff really did a great job, but. We had the Hall of Fame ceremony, I mean, qualifying, the amount of swimmers that we did for state, wrestling, western wrestlers, we qualified quite a few too. We had one state champion, Lance Van Hoos. And then we took two, our two boys' basketball team, our girls' basketball team down Coos Bay last weekend, the state tournament. And I'm very thankful, and I just talked to their A Ds today, but Marshfield, because, or Marshfield North Bend did a great job, turned it down. It felt like, I don't know, you were there too, but it felt, they were, they had a really good job, it felt like a state tournament, it had a little long ways to do it, but. But I thought, I mean, our, our kids represented themselves very well. And then also, you know, then the boys ended up winning the state title Saturday night, so that was a lot of fun. It was also a lot of fun, I mean, Calvin and his staff, Mark and his, and his staff and the kids, just, you could tell they, they were very well represented by not only the families, but just how they, how they behaved on the court, and how they handled themselves and all that, it was great to see all that, so. Both staffs did a great job, and it was a lot of fun, there was a ton of people down there, we had a rudder bus go down, Tyler got right on the rudder bus, which I appreciate that very much. Twice, I bought him a soda when he got down there, that's usually how we buy him off, so, you know. But, but I mean, it was, and, and then the parents, just to, I mean, going over and whether they're, I know the boys' parents did quite a bit. They were cooking meals for the boys, and I know, there's just a lot, it's a village kind of thing, right? And so, I mean, our village down there was very well represented, and so I very much appreciate that, it was fun to just be able to, I had to, I had to, yeah, I did. I had to sit next to the student section the whole time, because that's part of my, part of my job, is to make sure everything's going the way it's supposed to be going. But the kids did a really nice job, I got, I actually got a compliment from the O S double A lady that worked for you then, so that was nice. I can't say her and I always see how I, but we did that nice, that was great. So I appreciated that. And then the other thing that came up, and I'll take, you know, any questions that you have, but I've kind of preached quite a bit about this, but all of our teams made academic all-state pressure. So, you know, they, they, they made the top ten, and, and, you know, on various levels, I think, you know, girls' basketball got fourth, and boys were like fifth or sixth or something like that. But it was really cool, that's a lot of work by all my staffs too, and the kids. I mean, and so you balance all that, and all the crazy winter activities and the long season, such a long season that, you know, they're able to do that, do the academic part of it too. One other thing I forgot to mention was, we're gonna have a parade for the boys. I think we're gonna start at twelve thirty, we parade through the high school, junior high and the high school, then we'll go to all three of the elementary schools. Give everybody a chance, since it was a community event, truly was, give them a chance to kind of all come celebrate, so you guys are welcome to join us. It's a quick drive-through and all that stuff, and, and just give them a really good chance to celebrate with us. It'll be this Wednesday, we're gonna leave, we're gonna go to, they're starting about twelve thirty-five, we have the, the drum line lead us through the hallways and stuff, and and so we did it for volleyball, and it worked out really well. And then we through here, and then hop on a mini bus, and so Turner, we, excuse me, we're gonna go to Cloverdale first, and then Omsville, then finish up at Turner. So should be just a chance for everybody to kind of celebrate, get a little bit of closure before spring break, so. I think that's all the highlights, any questions?
So my objective, they look like Tim lost over, but the wrestling tournament here at this, at this site was a tremendous amount of work, he did an amazing job. The reason I came back here is a great job of Paul's here, so his efforts cannot be understated, he did an outstanding job, and I'm sure they'd love to have it every, if Tim was to work with you, so. You might be a little creative, you're longer than I am, but our athletic director now has in one year, you know, staffed two state titles in two different seasons. He's also one of the only people that won state, two state titles in this state school. So, Tim, thank you very much for doing this work. That, that's pretty amazing, when you add it all up, and think about that there's thirty-five, forty teams in our division, and to be able to kind of pull that stuff together is pretty, pretty. Great job for all of our teams, just a nice way to deal with a very difficult situation. With COVID and all this crazy, almost stupid, crazy world, and, you know, just a great one.
I appreciate that, I appreciate, and honestly, and I very much appreciate my staff and stuff too, I think my staff, our coaches. Right, I mean, they, I've got some veteran coaches who know what the heck they're doing, and so my job is to support them and kind of let them do their thing, and so I very much appreciate what they're doing, and all that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, moving on, we've got junior high principal's report.
Good evening. Um, so this month was a little bit quieter for us. We kind of started off and sent a lot of February focusing on ways to engage students, because we're six, eight weeks past Christmas, so we need to do something to rev them up a little bit, so we had a spirit week, which was great, then the two, 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 two-two. Mrs. Bailey had the great idea that we needed two-twos in the classroom, and so one of our staff members is amazing at tie-dying, so our tie-dye queen and Mrs. Bailey paired up, and so we had beautiful tie-dyes up in our staff, and lots of two-twos going around, so it was like very festive, but created. And so, we had beautiful tie dyes up in our staff and lots of two twos going around. So, it was like very festive, but creative day. And at two twenty-two, Mrs. Bailey actually made the announcement and asked, um, for kids who had participated and dressed up in the evening. So, that was great. With masks coming off, we had students actually guess how many kids were actually wearing braces by grade level and then for the whole school. Because so many had no idea. And ironically, we were way low on our estimation. Only about thirty kids per grade level had braces. And it turns out that maybe, um, we probably be able to get into the orthodontist, but it would have been an impact. Or, um, a lot of them were using physical, in physicality now too. But we had about ninety kids, but that was a interesting, you know, comparison. We thought for sure it'd have a lot more going that direction. Um, the next focus for us is kind of giving back. And we're shifting from worrying about us and now it's time to focus on kindness for others. We started our sparrow club again and it is a, our leadership group two years ago brought in our first sparrow. And it's to deal with medically fragile children. And right now, we are working with a little four-year-old kiddo out of, um, I think he's just in Longview or, he's close by, but not in the Cascade area. He has butterfly syndrome. And so, his, um, there's only three in the state of Oregon who suffer from this and their skin is so fragile that actually any rough contact with anything can cause them to blister and bleed. So, the money that, and what I love about the sparrow club is that students are not asked to donate money per state. They're asked to donate time and community service. And the sparrow club works with neighboring, um, businesses like Les Schwab, I saw my Baker, there was quite a few. And anytime a student does one hour worth of community service, that opens up ten dollars from one of these businesses that goes towards the family. And so, our students were very receptive to the idea of how can we help this, you know, even though we don't know. Right now, our wood shop, the little guy likes wooden toys. And so, Mr. Patatik and a group of students are gonna work to create some wooden toys through, you know, and it'll be a great, um, use of community service. Plus, it's something that the little guy would enjoy. So, it's a win-win. He is hoping to use, um, some of their after-school hours to clean campus. So, it's benefiting both of us. So, I definitely appreciate this, you know, um, time to look to other people. And at junior hires, the more we look out, the better off it seems to do. And just today, my advocate, the leadership groups were asking about getting back to being able to clean the cemeteries, which it's been a couple of years since we've been able to. And so, um, I appreciate the idea of giving back this. Now that our world is starting to write itself, it's time to return it as such as normal as possible. So, any questions?
Any questions? All right, I'll ask you a question. So, we've got six hundred and twenty-eight students in your building. How many more until we're full?
Well, we're getting there. Uh, twenty of the, twenty-five of those are online. So, um, but we're getting pretty.
So, now we're down, we're down to six hundred and what, uh, three?
Three, yeah.
What's our capacity over there?
Um, not many more. It's pretty, honestly, it's pretty full. Um, our classrooms are full. Um, I could definitely use another teacher, but I have no place to put anybody else. So, some, the next people are gonna be on carts, which we all know is not the best format for any teacher. Somebody to be on a cart and somebody else trying to have a prep and somebody else is teaching in that classroom is definitely not the best environment. What we're making do, but, um, it won't be long before we can come up with a plan B.
My next question is, do we have a plan B in the works?
No, um, we're eyeballing, where else that can we create a classroom? And I'm not sure we have too many there. Mr. Britton being over at C T E has helped a little bit because it freed up his room some, but it's still not enough. So, I'm not really sure. Um, I know Mr. Rassason and I have talked about, you know, ten A, could we require there? I don't know that that's a great situation because band is loud and choir, they round out each other and there has to be a lot of soundproofing. So, um, the square maybe could be converted to something. I'm not really sure. Yeah.
But we're starting to push on the, uh, on the, the edges.
Yeah, definitely filling that quickly. So, all my classrooms are full every period of the day.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Thank you. All right. Moving on is elementary principal's report. And who wants to go first?
Okay, well, there you go. Good evening, everybody. Hey, um, before I get going on my, uh, at my school, I do want to take the time, I guess it's been a week. And I do, um, wanna say thank you to high school. And the reason why I wanna say thank you to high school, I have a need to just move in. She's a military grad. My uncle, I didn't know my uncle, but my, my brother-in-law and mother-in-law, they're moving back to Oregon after living twenty-five years across America to the spots. She's lived in Germany, Texas, all that kind of stuff, and transitioning to a brand-new school. And she's partaking in the things that you guys are offering. Um, Deb Bellmore does a creative thinking or creative thing on Thursdays, I'd say. Yeah, and they like paint, they do crafts, they do different things. She's participating. I think you guys should get a group of kids to the zoo. And, uh, she just is going to the dances, doing the things. She's not like this athletic outgoing person. She's actually very much a wallflower. But she is feeling included in the school. Um, and she's thriving and she's doing a really, really good job. Uh, Ron even got her going out to tennis spring and, um, completely, I had never thought she would ever be this big. She's very much, very meek and quiet, but she is thriving at the school and community. And it's, um, it's pretty awesome to see that. And it, it's the little things that they didn't even talk about, that they just do all these other things. Uh, Tyler brought up the postcards. Um, they got one of those in the mail, Mrs. Torres and Mrs. Rammus. And I can't tell you what that meant to her and my in-laws and just everything. It was like, this is really cool. I can't believe they did that. So, and they've been around schools everywhere, like Texas, Germany, all around Virginia, everyone. They just were very excited about what we've seen there. But I do wanna say thank you for taking care of the family and, um, now moving back to, uh, my school Cloverdale. Uh, I did wanna say, uh, looking at numbers, um, numbers are up a little bit. I did wanna highlight that. One of the things I wanna highlight with that is we did have a lot of movements. And with movements, uh, COVID and just, um, you had certainties and people losing jobs, different things, we had a lot of kids move in. Uh, and kind of like that five acres of grandma, grandpa's house, um, living in, being caretakers or doing different things. Some tough situations. And so, a lot of these kids that are coming in are dealing with homelessness, um, poverty, different things like that. Uh, we actually have an uptick in VHS call. I talked to Darren. I think we have, uh, this week, I think we have five, six, like VHS situations that we're dealing with right now that are pretty severe. Like there's a V taking away phones, uh, moving different things. And it's been a lot of turmoil. This is in our little school. I mean, we only have, you know, one seventy-four and we have some situations that we're dealing with. But one thing I, um, I do wanna say is I'm so thankful and so blessed by staff, uh, for the teachers and the community of Cloverdale. Because they are stepping up to find the resources that these kids need. Uh, and Yunker, um, from this, this is the board, Kathleen Rassason from this, uh, support, coming in and finding, um, support for these families and for these kiddos. Uh, we had one kid, it's happened actually a couple of years ago, but it's come full circle now where this kid was living in a shack basically. She always had to have short hair because life, um, dirty wraps in the house, different things. Through our work, um, calling VHS, working with Marion County, working with other community members, we found her a safe box space, a safe place to be and to foster. And she is thriving now. It is, uh, she is getting ready. Her academic scores are soaring. Uh, she grew her hair out because she always wanted long hair. And it's also, I saw her, she's playing C Y B. She's playing, uh, the, the softball program. She's actively, she is smiling. She was never smiling, she's smiling non-stop. And it's just amazing to see that turnaround. Um, it was like you said, you just saw her playing basketball and she was on a team, just staying with the other girls. And it was so fun to see her play and just smiling, laughing, goofing off and just not worrying about other junk and just being a kid. And it was really cool to see that. And again, that was just everybody, um, talking about emotional, social, emotional health. Uh, we did a Desta Universal, uh, stream. And so, we kind of shifted from doing whole group in the classroom to focusing a little bit more on small groups. Uh, that's also created opportunities to, um, for resources for Jessica, our counselor, to, um, create, like, as small group dealing with, um, multiple things, you know, anxiety, um, depression, and things like that, whatever the kids are kind of dealing with. And so, I did shout out that. So, it did us some real helpful, um, school culture. Uh, I, I said my nose, Ben, it's been a rough winter, to be quite honest for us. Uh, fall and early winter was actually like, hey, we're doing great. And then all of a sudden, COVID hit us upside the head on January, February, March. Um, and it, it was tough. So, it was all hands on deck. And I have to say, I'm so impressed with the staff at Cloverdale. Um, they are just, they just step up every, every way they can. A big shout out to Shelly, my secretary, the A in the office. Um, if it wasn't for her, school would fall apart. She is absolutely just amazing. I was gone. I had, I, I didn't have COVID for a week. So, that whole week went fine. And then I was out two weeks ago for three, three and a half days, the flu. And when I'm not there in the building, that's her taking the brunt of a lot of kids coming up. They get sent up to the office, phone calls, questions, and she takes that. And she does it with stride. She just does a great job with it. And so, I really, if you ever get a chance, say hi to her. She was an amazing person. Did a great job. With that, that has been, uh, that's basically what's coming down. The other thing, we, four of our kids have been working so hard the last, all year. They have been working hard. We are seeing great growth in all the indicators that we put out there. And so, now we're looking for ways to reward kids. We're looking for just doing some fun things, field trips. Uh, fourth graders taking a Eastern Oregon trip, uh, which is gonna be, I'll tell you more about that, um, next time I present. And it's gonna be, uh, it's a great time, like, to go to the zoo. Um, we're going on Thursday, we're going to the high school for the metal shop. So, I and I was putting together an opportunity for us to work with metal and grind and making us things. Kids are gonna work that. We had that planned pre-COVID, so it's only taken us two and a half years to get that, but we made it. And so, we're super excited about that. And Thursday is Cloverdale Day, uh, St. Patty's Day. We will have a field green. We're doing a sham rock run. It is gonna be awesome. So, and just kind of have fun at the end of the year. So, if you guys have any questions for me?
Any questions?
The field trips, are they grade-oriented or how, how do you work that?
Yeah, so this is gonna be kind of tricky. So, we, this is kind of talk about that. So, since kids miss opportunities, so like traditionally, first grade always goes to the zoo. And so, we have second and third graders that didn't get to go to the zoo. And so, we're gonna work on having those classes go to those things that they missed before. Um, just because we believe in the experience that all kids should get when they're in elementary and we wanna make sure that they get those. And so, we're trying to figure out how, and we're lucky enough that it was fall. And so, that we can, so we get one bus, get two classes on. It's different for the other school, but we are blessed to be able to do that, that we can consolidate field trips and get more classes to go and different things like that. So, that's how we're attacking that. So.
The eastern oriented trip, though, that you're not gonna be able to accommodate.
We're just gonna take one group there. Yeah. But we are doing the fifth graders and kind of make up that. We're doing kind of a, a fun, um, and we go fun in fifth grade gift day where they're going to like, like post park or they're going to bowling hole or something like that. We can kind of celebrate them if they got to miss that one.
Okay. Well, thank you for doing all the effort.
Yeah. Do you have a question?
I have a question for Mr. Grill at the end of your report.
Okay, sorry. Anything else? And, oh, and I got his shirt's on there. And again, I wanna say thank you. And I know you guys share this. I know we say this a lot. But when we go through this, I really wanna say, I can't imagine going through the pandemic with a different board. And it's, I know a lot of you guys outside and I just appreciate you guys. Especially when you read the newspaper, what's going on in other boards and I'm like, one law, you're lucky, you're truly blessed to have you. And it really is nice to be able to talk to you guys. And you guys set that, you guys create stability for us, for us to be able to do our job. So, that I really wanna say thank you. Um, I truly wanna say thank you. Yeah, that's, that's really awesome.
Very kind. Thank you.
Could I ask Mr. Grill a question about a theme that I hear in these reports? Um, and it kind of ties on to what Brian just said. I wanna be as serious about supporting their success as they are about supporting our kids' success. And I have a question about the theme that we're hearing about, uh, resources in terms of space, school space. And I just, I need to be reminded, um, it's true that we have the, many of the best teachers in the state. That is a fact. We have the best coaches. That is a fact. We have some of the very best building principals. That is a fact. We have student achievement that is superior, uh, in most areas. If, if what it takes to keep a gifted teacher or a gifted principal in business is space, I want to be ahead of the curve, not behind it, on making sure that we have spaces for creative adults to connect with kids. Just remind me of what we're doing or what the process is. If we see a bump coming with the middle school and we have creative, healthy adults who are ready to engage kids and we don't have ideal spaces, what are we doing then? Just remind me what our overall plan is for the middle of that.
Well, it's a little bit cross our fingers and hope. And that's not a great plan. The other part of it is coming back to, this board talked about, coming back to the concept of the bond. After we kind of got through pieces of code. We attempted that in middle, failed by ten percent. And the conversation, uh, ongoing is where do we build from there? Okay? We addressed Turner's situation. Um, I heard back with some people that said, see, you didn't need a bond. You're able to take care of it. We depleted the money in the account that we used for one place, right? The bond, a bond wouldn't be able to address the many things. Junior high is really the next place that's probably the most critical around space. Cloverdale is close behind. Um, Brian mentioned that we went one hundred and fifty-seven kids last year, seven four. And that's a limited space. So, we are going to have to have that conversation, um, in May. I actually wrote it down that, um, Lisa's here tonight. And Tom Love will like to invite you guys, we'll set it up as part of the field trip we're putting in May. So, you can see that that form flex that we built. And I think that's gonna have to spark our conversation about what we do, how we, right? We are talking in terms, Cheryl was working today on how is that we limit students that are inter-district transfers? Cause we have this, we have many students of our own. And there's some ways to work on that. It just kind of squeezes the, the way in which people can come in. But in the long run, John, the conversation is how do we impress upon our community that we are running out of space. So, these guys have been creative. They, they continue to come up with interesting ideas. They sit down and really have a conversation about how do you split up ten A and cut it in half or cut it in quarters? And how do you do stuff like that? It's difficult. But we really are to have a place where we're running out of space. So, we need, we need to talk about it. So, there's not a lot that I can say there other than we need to think in terms of the next three, five years. We solved the Turner problem for two, for two to three years, right? At least we'll probably say one year. Uh, because there's some other creative things that we would like to continue to. But it really solves the problem for two to three officially with regard to just classrooms. But after that, we're, we're back to square one.
I don't need a full answer, but did somebody do careful, is somebody in this room on top of careful analysis of why the voters said no on the last bond and, and really understanding why that wasn't successful?
There are a couple of people in this room that know an awful lot. I'm happy to put you in touch. One's, one's lucky at the end. Not that everybody else didn't, but that, that professional right there.
Yeah.
Has a lot, answers a lot of information, put a lot of time in that, to what went right and what went wrong. So, um, that's something we can come back to.
Thank you.
Okay, good. All right. We'll move on to Turner.
Hey, thank you very much. I'm so excited. Um, the big headline news is the opening of our new building. We moved in last week and thanks for bringing that up because to have some space, to be able to have a creative scene room, at least for a while, is going to be very innovative and I think a great model for kids. And I can't wait for you to see it in May. Other big news is I required a community service project for every class, but when it takes a life of its own, it's really exciting. Uh, the fourth grade is doing a financial stimulation for social studies. In talking about how quickly they're running out of money, one of the fourth graders said, well, yeah, when both my parents had COVID, my mom said what we have to eat is what we have to eat. And that sparked the discussion of, you know, there's actually kids that don't have snacks, which led to the spring break snack drive. And on Wednesday, four hundred and some snack bags will be going home to every child at Turner because of the efforts of that fourth grade class to get donations as well as the Turner Parent Club. So the new building, the snack drive, and of course, just creating a joyful space for kids. And as Tyler said, there's just no bad day when we have them back with us at Turner. I'll be happy to take your questions. Well, we just finished our mid-year reviews of the math program. The I-ready math assessments were done. The mid-year literacy RTI assessments were accomplished. And we took all that data and we put together the kids that need additional interventions. And we did our intervention group. We're actually running math interventions with our math coach. And we are starting the after-school kid support group after spring break called ASK, where we're targeting specific kids to get additional help after school. We're doing that though three, five, because in kindergarten, after they've had a day, it's kind of, they're done. So we are targeting the older kids with the realization that we'll have the K and ones a little longer to get them caught up to be where they need to be. Also wanted to, what the other headline is, our bonus program is in full speed with staff. And we talked about retaining people. I think if you take care of their needs, and I'd like to figure out a way to keep that going beyond this year as well, once the grant runs out. Other questions? Yeah?
Yeah, with this testing, um, so you, so you've tested, you've identified seats that you'd extra help with. Do you retest them? I just got that population, that group?
Yeah, the RTI, the response to intervention literacy. They're constantly doing benchmark testing as an ongoing strategy. And then re-assessing and then putting together the groups that need additional support based on the results. And then we have the traditional state testing after spring break. Yeah.
Okay. And what grades are that?
Three to five.
Three and five or?
Three to five.
Three to five. Okay.
So can you talk a little about the new building? What does that look like? What, what do you have in there for classroom? What is it? What did it do for the primary building as far as?
Well, what it did is it allowed us to eat indoors.
There you go.
Starting January 10th, much to the relief of some woman off the street who thinks kids should be eating outside in January. But she lives from Montana, obviously. So what it did is we were able to reopen our cafeteria, which was the literacy reading room. So we are now in the cafeteria. Like Tyler Woodrow's daughter was like, hey, I get to eat in cafeteria for the first time as a first grader. And we then moved the literacy program into the library, which they have all their different stations that they use. They have six different stations going on at any one time. And then we moved libraries. So we have four new buildings. They're absolutely beautiful. Thanks to Scott for helping with that process as well. And the first building is, or the first room is the library. The second room is the SS steam room until it's, it's going to be turned into fifth grade. And then the next two are our current fifth grade. We have three classes of K one, two, and three. Next year, we're adding four, which will be in the former fourth, fifth grade. And then the year after that, we'll be adding fifth. The steam room, I consider it a pilot project. We use title four as well as S R two funds. If it's something, I mean, it's, it's incredible. I believe it's going to be a great model of learning because everything is individualized. It's exploratory.
Does steam have a meaning?
Yeah, science, technology, engineering, art, math. And then the SS is social studies, because there's stuff in there from around the world, of course. So, and if it's something we can't, you know, something can be a good idea, but is it used? If it's something that's utilized, the idea is teachers will be able to sign up for the steam room and take their classes. Sarah and I will also have different activities planned, like, hey, we're doing this experiment for this project, come out to the steam room. And if it's something we can't live without, then the next step would be to utilize what we currently have as a music room, which we have for the first time today. And then we'll just share that space with library and music since it's not every day.
Okay. So, so the flow is, is a little easier to navigate.
Oh, it's absolutely, it's incredible. And the library, I mean, these rooms are beautiful. They're functional. They're, I mean, they're two by six construction. They're set on a foundation. The only difference is it was built off site.
Right.
And placed, but they're absolutely beautiful in every way. And we just feel like we can breathe.
So it's meeting expectations at least at this point.
Oh, by far. And then we'll have actually state testing in what will be the fourth grade room next year. So that we'll have a testing room for this spring anyway.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you for that.
Any other questions or comments?
So you have empty classrooms in the main building then?
No, not the main 100-year-old building is completely full.
Okay.
Uh, we have a music room now. And then in a couple of short months, a new teacher will be moving into the fourth grade. What, for the rest of this spring, one room will be designated for our testing room. And actually, Michael, I appreciate you brought over computers today for state testing.
In which building? You have three buildings now?
Uh, what was formerly the four, five building, the one that was constructed during the last bond.
Okay.
Testing could be done in teachers' rooms, but they have to cover everything. It's kind of an ordeal. Kids get done early, then they have to sit there. Having a testing room for the next couple of months will be a nice treat.
I'm, I'm following.
I can't wait for you to have the tour.
I know. I'm like.
Cause it's, yeah. The foreign building, Kate Red Gold Room. But yeah, it's, it's, it's perfect right now.
Wonderful.
Any other questions?
Question? Nope. All right. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you.
All right, moving on to seven is discussions with personnel.
All right, so. Um, we are entering into business season for HR. So for the next seven months, it's gonna be go, go, go.
Busy season, seven months? Oh, man.
March through October is, is like, go, go, go. Um, so we're gonna be doing a lot of hiring, probably some reservations with that free in your packet today. Emily Hamilton, woman husband, and Elizabeth Schroeder from, from Osville, who will not be returning for the 22, 23 school year. We are, you're also gonna be seeing new staff recommendations come through. Um, so we hope to get our hiring done as soon as possible. So we do have a new staff recommendation for junior high and Brian Rosso. He was hired as a temporary counselor earlier this year and will be returning as probationary for the 22 school year. And then you also have in your packet, um, a license renewal. Uh, this person was, uh, left off of the list that you were given in February. And so we need to bring him to you for people tonight. You have any questions on any of the personnel issues?
No, 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 no. Far.
Okay.
And we're moving on to.
You want me to do the next one?
Seven, yeah, seven.
Seven B, safe return in-person instruction.
Are we done on the retirement from first?
Oh, no, we didn't. Thank you. Seven A, retirement from first. Uh, we have a couple of staff members who are, or have been, or have retired for a senior. Um, so stay online and Harvey Roberts, especially when you start taking advantage of the.
Okay, perfect. Now we'll move on to seven B, they're returning to in-person instruction and continue with you. That's certain. Yeah.
So this was in your packet last month. Um, but because they changed the deadline, uh, for sending them into O D E from February to March 30th, that I would bring it to you this evening. This is really how this whole district ensuring that our students are continuing to be safe as we return and bring them into in-person instruction, especially with the new guidance around masks being optional. Uh, there really wasn't a whole lot of changing that needed to happen from what we submitted earlier in the year. I would say the biggest change was, uh, what was submitted for special ed. It was a little bit, uh, we had to provide some additional documentation, additional information on how we're addressing the needs of our special ed students. So that was really the biggest change from what we previously submitted.
What is protocol now? As of today, if somebody is positive, what does that mean to the child sitting next to them in the classroom?
They do not have to quarantine, but we do have to notify, uh, what we're going to be doing with the elementary schools, we're applying by cohort. So that if there is a student in the classroom or a teacher or a staff member in the classroom that, um, is positive for COVID, then there will be notifications at home. Um, there is no quarantine requirements anymore unless you are symptomatic and then you have to isolate.
And what is, as far as isolating, tell you no longer have symptoms and then? Five days from beginning?
From the start of symptoms.
Okay.
So the first day of symptoms is day zero. And then you count five days from that, then they can return. Even if they still have symptoms, they can return as long as they don't have a fever for 24 hours.
Okay.
Uh, without the use of medication. And their symptoms are improving. It is recommended that they come to school or work wearing a mask for days six or 10, but it is not a requirement.
Okay. And that's at all grades, all levels?
At all grades, all levels. No more quarantine, no more contact tracing. Um, all of those pieces are on pause. And, uh, really it's just isolating the A P.
And are we doing any kind of testing here? I don't know if we were, but is there any kind of testing being done as far as somebody needing, uh?
We still have tests available so that if somebody becomes, you know, developed symptoms while they're at school or even for our staff, if they're symptomatic and they want to drive through and get a test or at school, we can still do that. Um, but that is the extent it really is for those that become symptomatic.
And what about buses? Are masks required on buses or no?
No, masks are not. Um, those are optional.
Okay.
On buses as well.
Okay.
Um, not regular public transportation, but transportation for H12 and preschool, charter schools, all of those, that has become mask optional.
Okay, that was my question. All right, good.
Any other questions?
Nope. All right. We're good on that. Thank you very much. Um, going on to seven C is school calendar.
Yeah, before we get there, just so you know, all these people now have honorary first, um, first licenses because they know all of this stuff inside and out.
Wonderful.
Theory that.
Happy to know.
John just rattles off, if you've said something, Brian or or Lisa or Cindy, any of them, they would stand up and they could say, no, this is how this all works. It amazes me after 20 months, how much they know about the medical side of the process.
Right, good.
Once again, uh, your calendar for the 22, 23 school year is in front of you. I'd like to think that we don't have to talk about this more than one time, but you know, who knows? The last, it feels like the last two calendars, we adjusted and rearranged numerous times. Um, we will start after Labor Day. Uh, normally with the late, uh, um, Labor Day starts, uh, in September, we would think about going to be early. We can't because we have a seismic grant, work we've worked on for the moment. When kids get out of school in the junior highs, the moment we start school, we need every day in the summer possible to make sure that the sixth grade wing, the U shape around into the district office, which is a little less concerning, uh, is done and ready to go so that doesn't have a place for all those private sixth grade classrooms. So, um, the holidays are set up in there. It's kind of nice that, uh, Veterans Day actually lands on Friday. So you don't have this random Tuesday or Wednesday that we have off back to school. And we have built in all of our late starts along with, um, our various days off that we do for workdays and. So we should be good to go for next year.
All right. Questions? Thank you, Mr. Grill. Moving on to seven B is board policies.
Board policies, the same as last time. Again, uh, almost all of them, we'll back through one more time. Almost all of them are required from OSBA attorneys. Um, I really don't see anything on there that, um, makes a major change in the process. We will soon see a few more because legislature just got done. And, uh, 10 months from now, we'll start over and begin with the legislative session. And you'll notice that these are slightly smaller and smaller. So that's a good thing. Usually in between legislative sessions, you will see a policy change if there was a legal case or something changed at the federal level, particularly around, uh, administrative. See fewer of these as we go until we get to the next legislative.
Okay. Good. Any questions on that? Nope. Okay. Thank you for that. Moving on is seven E, the superintendent evaluation of contract. And the Cascade School Board evaluated Mr. Grill in various areas, including visionary leadership, policy and governance, communications and community relations, effective management, curriculum planning and development, instructional leadership, resource management, ethical leadership and labor relations. And we have given Mr. Grill favorable, um, reviews in all of those categories. And we will be approving his contract for another three-year term. And Mr. Grill would like to say thank you for everything you've done to this district. It's very much appreciated. And we have enjoyed working with you and look forward to continuing to do so.
Thank you very much. My honor.
Thank you. Wonderful. Okay. Any thing anyone wants to add to that? Nope. All right. Then we'll move on to information items. Um, it looks like eight A is going to be the coach advisor list.
So we have the coach advisor list in front of you all put together, uh, Tim is submitting all the stuff. Again, another kudos, kind of kudos to Tim Knight. Um, we used to really struggle to get these things done. They're all put together in time. March, for March, we used to really have some of these done in April and May. And, uh, spring coaches, we started last week, spring sports. So all done, ready to go. They're all listed, uh, all taken care of. So.
All right. Minus the weather.
Yeah, well, you had to start having rain like that's about it.
Oh, yeah, it's been that way.
Okay, we're gonna move on to eight D, first trimester employee recognition. Mr. Grill.
So again, uh, many of the people that you're looking at tonight, we asked administrators in each building uh, to give us a couple of names of people that just do an outstanding job. I guess they mentioned that numerous times, we have a lot of great employees that work here. Uh, these are the folks that were highlighted in the first trimester. And, uh, I think Cheryl said something out today. Did you? Can't hint. If you got that email, right, make sure to send in names for our second trimester. And then our first trimester, we want to share those names with you. Uh, we got recognition for them and a little, uh, something extra. Say thank you very much for doing such a great job.
Okay. Any thoughts, any questions? Nope. All right. Moving on in seven or eight C, COVID report.
So you guys had asked, make sure that we have a COVID case count. And this now shows from the beginning of the school year through. Um, appreciate, uh, Krista Gray, the district nurse, gasoline supervisor, sir. Did a great job of putting these things together. Noticed in January, how many cases we had in February, it sort of came down. And she, she made a mention, numbers had a major stop right around February 17th. That's when you started to see a real turnaround. I would imagine next month when you see March, it will look very, very small. So just wanted to give you guys an update, make sure that you're aware of what we're using.
Okay. Thank you for that. Moving on is number nine, public comment. And my understanding is we have no, no submissions that we need to address. Anything else we need to talk about, public comment this evening?
Yeah, I'll make a comment. Uh, it's with mixed emotions that I'm gonna ask the board to, uh, vote on the resolution tonight to accept my resignation to school board in five and a half years. Uh, and I'd say it's mostly because I think for the board, I think this is really good timing. A year ago would have been a good timing, bring somebody else on. Six months ago, probably not, but right now, I think it's, it's a good time. Mr. Pillar said, financially, we can kind of coast for the next couple of years. Things are stable. It's in good hands. It's been great. It's been awesome to work here at the board. Thanks for everything.
All right.
We affected March.
Well, I will say on behalf of myself anyway, thank you for everything you've done on the board. It, we enjoyed having you on the team and appreciate everything you've provided and added to us. Well, so thank you. All right. Moving on, we've got resolutions. And we'll start with ten A, resolution regarding resignation.
We resolve the Cascade Board of Education to approve resignations again. Emily Hamilton, elementary teacher, Carmen Houston, elementary teacher, and Hubert Schröder, elementary teacher, as recommended by the administration.
Okay. Ten A, resolution regarding resignations has been moved in seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ten B, resolution regarding new hire recommendation.
We resolve the Cascade Board of Education to approve the hire of Ryan Rosso, junior high counselor, as recommended by the administration.
Okay. Ten B, resolution regarding new hire recommendations has been moved in seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Ten C, resolution regarding license renewal list.
We resolve the Cascade Board of Education to approve the license renewal list as recommended by the administration.
Okay. Ten C, resolution regarding license renewal list has been moved in seconded. Ten C, resolution regarding license renewal list has been moved and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying hi.
Hi.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, ten D, resolution regarding retirement from first.
We resolve the Cascade Board of Education moves to approve the retirement from first for Carol Fienor on April first, two thousand twenty-two. And Arnie Louder on March first, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Ten D, resolution regarding retirement from first has been moved and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying hi.
Hi.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, ten E, resolution regarding safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of services plan.
We resolve Cascade Board of Education moves to approve the safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of services plan as recommended by the administration.
Ten E, resolution regarding safe return to in-person instruction and.
Continuity.
Continuity of service plan has been moved and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying hi.
Hi.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, ten F, resolution regarding twenty-two, twenty-three school calendar.
We resolve the Cascade Board of Education moves to approve the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand four-three school calendar.
Second.
Ten F, resolution regarding twenty-two, twenty-three school calendar has been moved and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying hi.
Hi.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, ten G, resolution regarding board policies, second reading.
We resolve the Cascade Board of Education moves to approve the second reading of the board policies listed below.
Second. Ten G, resolution regarding board policy, second reading has been moved and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying hi.
Hi.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, ten H, resolution regarding superintendent contract.
We resolve the Cascade Board of Education moves approval for the proposed superintendent's contract for another three-year term, two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Ten H, resolution regarding superintendent contract has been moved and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying hi.
Hi.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, ten I, resolution regarding uh school board member resignation.
I move to accept this request, resignation for Cascade School Board member David Kinsey, position four, on detective on March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
I'm sorry, is that the thirtieth, David, or the thirty-first?
Uh, thirty-first. We have a second down there?
Second, no.
I love you, I, I'm not doing it.
I seconded the motion. Ten I, resignation of board member has been moved and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying hi.
Hi.
All right, oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right, future, number eleven, future agenda items.
So um, we did talk a little bit about getting things set up for the main field trip. Uh, I'll just see the building, and uh, we'll talk with Lisa and Tom, I'll be back in April. And second, I'll be able to show you that, I'm sure at this level, we'll give you every detail that you want to know about compared to that building. And Lisa can fill you in with what's going on on the insiders, I'll be perfect fix. And then secondarily, we'll need to have you guys talk a little bit about how you're gonna run the process of having a board.
So back to the tour of that building, Mr. Grill, are we gonna do that during the day, we're gonna try to do it evening before board meeting, what's the?
We said that we've got a couple of months, we wanted to do it in May, so we'll have a chance to make sure it's being used and worked on and all that kind of stuff. Um, so um, we can figure out a way to talk about how you guys would like to do that, would work best for you guys.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
With all of you there, I'm sure Cheryl will explain that you must have it as a meeting or a work session or something.
Right, right, I think so, we'll work around that accordingly.
Yep, we'll do the right work.
Okay, wonderful. Um. And any other future agenda items we need to address? No, 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 all right, anything, anybody? All right, everybody, thanks for coming this evening.